This meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees is hereby called to order. A quorum is present in person at the Waco ISD Administration Building. This meeting is also available as a video and audio conference in accordance with the Governor's suspension of certain open meeting requirements to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify members of the public may attend in person or watch live on Waco ISD TV, Channel 17 on Grande Communications and Spectrum, and online at wacoisd.org/live. Members of the public attending in person may sign up to offer public comments on an agenda item, as is our normal practice, and those who are not attending in person were instructed to submit their comments in writing to Joshua Wueter via email by 10:00 last night. Members of the Board who are not physically present in the boardroom are participating via a video conferencing application, which allows for two-way communication between those in person and those participating remotely. All items to be discussed or voted upon have been posted in accordance with state law. If you have questions about the suspended open meeting requirements, please contact the Office of the Attorney General by calling 888-672-6787, or by emailing tona@oag.texas.gov. At this time, the Board's going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code Subchapters D and E 551, 71, 72, and 74 to discuss personnel. We will return probably at 7:00. All right, thank you. All right, we are back from closed session where no action was taken, and I believe the next item on the agenda is public comments, and none have been received. I am going to...well, actually, we're kind of on target here. Next is Special Recognitions, and we have special guests with us tonight for representing Ascension Providence. So is that you, Mr. Wueter?
Yes, it is.
I will turn it over to you at this time, then, and then we'll go to the Yamaha 40 Under 40 Honoree second. I hope that doesn't miss out.
No, no. Quick change, not a problem. Well, this evening, Waco ISD's theme that we're going to talk about for the 2020-2021 school year, "Empower All, Value All," it's a theme that reflects the district's mission to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all. It celebrates learning and growing as students, professionals, and individuals. Waco ISD recognizes that when individuals feel empowered and valued, their ability to overcome challenges, grow, and succeed is strengthened. However, the district also recognizes that no individual, organization can thrive and accomplish their goals or mission alone. Instead, we are at our best when families, employees, and community join together to realize shared hopes and dreams to empower and value our students. We are blessed as a district to have scores of community partners who are deeply invested in the district's students, staff, and their success. Each month, we recognize a community partner making a difference with the Waco ISD Award for Outstanding Community Partners. In February, Waco ISD proudly recognizes Ascension Providence. Now, Ascension Providence was previously recognized in May 2020 for their partnership with our district following their vital role in assisting and guiding us through a reopening and risk mitigation plan during the COVID-19 pandemic. Since then, Ascension Providence has continued to partner with the district, including a sports medicine sponsorship to provide sports medicine support and services for Waco ISD athletes and athletic programs. We can skip over a second. There we go. There is Dr. Susan Kincaid and Dr. Richard Haskett. More recently, Ascension Providence has continued to support the district by partnering unlimited COVID-19 vaccination administration pilot clinics for district employees who meet the state's eligibility criteria for Phase 1A and Phase 1B. We can go over two more slides. Got a video that shows the first clinic, which was held Saturday, February 6th, at University High School, provided 384 vaccinations to district staff. A second clinic, held Saturday, February 20th, served more than 400 individuals, including staff from Waco ISD and smaller districts from our surrounding area. Clinics for administration of the necessary second doses will be held this Saturday, February 27th and March 13th. Ascension Providence staff helped organize and plan the clinics, prepped and administered the vaccinations. Saw that there. There's our Principal of Wiley Opportunity Senator, Laurel Curtis, receiving his vaccination. Ascension Providence staff prepped and administered these vaccinations and provided necessary post-vaccination data entry support. Representatives from the Ascension Providence team accepted the award at the clinic held Saturday, February 20th, though, as you mentioned, Madam President, we do have a special guest from Ascension Providence, Dr. Richard Haskett. The Board would love to hear from you and tell you thanks.
Good evening. How are y'all doing? So it is my honor to be able to represent Ascension Providence with you, and I think that what I would like to tell you first and foremost is, none of this happens, none of this partnership happens without the leadership of your team. When we found that we were a vaccine hub, we looked for people to partner with, and it just seemed natural to call Susan and say, could we do something with the school districts? Susan brought Kyle DeBeer and Rhiannon Settles, and we were blessed by their presence. But the truth of the matter is that it wasn't one of those things where you could give a fish or teach a fish. We pretty much had to figure out how to build the boat together and hope we would catch some fish, and boy, did we catch a lot of fish. Over 1,100 people have been vaccinated through this school project. You see, it wasn't enough for Susan and the team to just do the 1A and 1B patients within Waco. We made it bigger. She dreamed bigger. We dreamed bigger together. We brought in Midway. We brought in some of the smaller school districts, and I'm happy to say thanks to your leadership and the leadership of your team. Now, we're looking at other partnerships with MCC and other networks to just make this even greater, because every shot that goes in is one step further that we have as a community towards getting our life together, to be able to keep our schools open, to be able to have our businesses open, to be able to help this community. I'm very honored to be able to represent Providence. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Philip Patterson, who is our Hospital President, tremendous leader, Dr. Brian Becker, my very dear friend, our Hospital Chief Medical Officer, Cindy Dunlop, who is our Chief Nursing Officer. I would like to specifically recognize Katrina George, who is our Director of Managed Care, who led this project, and Ms. Lisa Holt, our Director of Clinic Operations for Ascension Medical Group, Paige Rinke, and Kurt Kurtz of our pharmacy. So many people, but just a fraction of who was there. Thank you for your time. Thank you for what you do for this community, and thank you for trusting us to take a small part of this walk together.
I just want to say that, first of all, thanks for coming out tonight.
Of course.
But I think what's really critical for folks to understand is, this doesn't just happen, and like you said, it was really you reaching out to Dr. Kincaid and the two of you brainstorming to figure out how we can get this done.
I actually think it was the other way around. I think she reached out to me.
I don't remember. ...through this all along, and the fact that you're willing to take our phone call and help us solve problems and get our staff taken care of when, you know, there are a lot of people around the state who still are not, so we're the exception. So we're just...I'm just really proud of this program, and I'm very grateful to you and your team and to our team for making it happen. Anyway, that's for me.
Dr. Haskett, I just want to say thank you. Your team and your...the people that you've been working with and serving, you've been doing this for a long time, and you guys have been on the front lines, and so I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you. I just...I almost want to stand up and say bravo. Bravo.
You're very kind.
To your team, for everything that you've done. We...we are deeply grateful that you have coordinated with us and have really had a team effort here with Dr. Kincaid, and we are so thankful that you have brought hope to our district.
We're all in the hope business, aren't we?
Yes.
If we weren't, we don't need these positions. Be sure to give my best to Jeremy, and thank you very much for your kind words. I know you know all too well what our healthcare professionals are dealing with, but we're all in this. Everybody has their story. It's thankful...it's a great place that our story together is about rebuilding, not just holding on, but building hope and building on what we can do together. Have great faith in your district and great faith in my hometown, Waco, Texas. I know you share that. Thank you.
I want to just thank you publicly. Dr. Haskett has been real fun during the pandemic. I have him once be dial on my phone, and he always answers me when I need something, and I'm very appreciative. I think what was significant about this partnership was that we had nurses who can assist, and so we were able to contribute, and they were able to contribute with their team, and then we had fabulous people who could organize, and so we shared the burden of doing the work, the labor. I didn't consider it a burden. I didn't work very hard. I was there to greet and take care of our employees, but I think it's labor-intensive to do something like this, and it was really awesome to do it together.
Well, to give you some sense of context, we're over 20,000 vaccinations that are in arms thanks to the Ascension Providence Hub to date. Over 6,000 people have received two vaccinations out of that, but I will share with you that when we walked into your first event at university, we said, well, they're doing this better than we do. And then I thought, well, of course, this is about running people through and having people stand in line and follow the rules, and who does this better than educators?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay, we do have one more recognition for this evening. One of our educators, the Yamaha 40 Under 40 Honoree. Give us a moment as we get back to that, but let me tell you a little bit about Parkdale Elementary Music Specialist, Gisele Vento. She received this national recognition as an honoree in Yamaha's newly-launched 40 Under 40 Music Education Advocacy Program. Vento joins 39 other innovative music educators under the age of 40 who exemplify the highest level of music education in the United States. The 40 Under 40 Music Education Advocacy Program was established by Yamaha to celebrate music educators at all grade levels, public and private, as well as private music instructors that were selected from hundreds of music education leaders that were nominated by students, parents, teachers, and administrators, local instrument dealers, and mentors last fall. Honorees were selected based on one of four qualities: proactively taking necessary steps that lead to a stronger music program, proposes and implements new or bold ideas, shows innovation and imagination in achieving plans and objectives. And if we can advance the slide one more, you can see Ms. Vento also establishing and growing or improving music education in their schools and communities. And I know Dr. Kincaid had the pleasure of being in Ms. Vento's class at the beginning of the year, and you can speak to the passion and enthusiasm that she brings to the classroom, and so we want to give a big congratulations again to Gisele Vento, a Yamaha 40 Under 40 honoree.
I think I sang her duck song for about three days. That's so cute.
Very cute. That'll wrap it up for this evening's recognitions. Thank you.
Okay, I have a few items for you. First, I want to talk about Black History Month, and I think Josh has some pictures to put with that. Thank you, Dr. Haskett. Each year, Black History Month...for Black History Month, Waco ISD provides a variety of engaging programs, activities, and lessons to celebrate, recognize, and value cultural heritage. Students explore the diverse histories, experiences, stories, and voices of African-Americans of the past and present. So tonight, we're happy to highlight some of the unique ways our campuses celebrated Black History Month. Waco High School's Black History Program is always a wonderful showcase of music, song, dance, and speech. I was happy to get to attend their program today, and it was called "In a Time of Darkness, Be a Light." While there was a small audience due to COVID-19, and social distancing, recording was made to share with the students and a broader community, and I really did enjoy that today. Lots of talented students. At South Waco Elementary, each grade level learns songs to commemorate the achievements of African-Americans and recognize their central role in U.S. history. Here's a picture of preschoolers performing "Freedom, Freedom, Let It Ring," a song that features quotes from Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Music was a big part of Dean Hyland's Black History Month program overseen by PE teacher Shamika Carpenter. Student speakers shared information about historical figures, including Waco native Doris Miller, the first female self-made millionaire, Madam C.J. Walker, and cultural icon Don Cornelius. Naturally, they honored him the only way you can by doing the Soul Train. Cedar Ridge Elementary engaged students by providing a Black History Month virtual reading room with books featuring Black histories and characters. Students could click on individual books to hear them read aloud. At Bell's Hill in Crestview Elementary, authors read their own books as part of HEB's "Be the Change" Virtual Storytime. Crestview's second graders heard "All About the Adventures of Sir Jankster" by Lamar Jones, who also performed a rap version of his story. Bell's Hill's fifth graders heard from author Michaela Ulmer, who wrote "Be Fearless, Dream Like a Kid." She's only 16 years old, and her company, Me and the Bee's Lemonade, is a multimillion-dollar business. Both authors' stories were very inspiring, and we're thankful HEB invited Waco ISD to be a part of their "Be the Change" event. At Lake Eyre, Montessori, and Parkdale Elementary, students channeled their creativity by highlighting historical figures, some of whom are from the Waco community in door decorating activities. Here are pictures where students designed presentations around G.W. Carver, Kobe Bryant, and Paul Quinn. And Waco High's art teachers joined their classes together to decorate halls and lockers with beautiful art. Pictured here is a mural titled "Be a Light" that emphasizes equality, peace, and transformation. Future murals are being planned for students to celebrate different cultures all year long. And finally, in support of Waco ISD's mission to provide an educational foundation that empowers and values all, this Board and our district have committed to not only being non-racist, but an anti-racist organization. It's important to recognize that our work toward equity and unity can and will be enriched by continuing to celebrate Black History Month and other heritage months throughout the year. And that turned out beautiful, by the way, at Waco High School. I saw it about halfway through, and I wasn't quite sure, but man, it turned out great. Just a little bit about elementary and secondary UIL. All of our schools, all elementary schools and all middle schools during the month of January and the first week of February participated in the annual UIL Academics Competition. All events were held virtually this year with the assistance of the campus UIL coordinators and under the direction of the Fine Arts Department. We had 578 students compete in 27 events at the elementary level, and 514 students participate at the middle school level in a total of 41 events. If you know about elementary and middle school UIL, you know those events. There are a number of events that students can participate in, from math to science to writing, social studies, music, art, and then some speaking events. It's always a great time for the kids, and it really is enriching for them. Each individual or team that places in an event earns points towards the overall district championship, and this year, we are pleased to announce six elementary...the top six elementary schools and the top three middle school teams. So the top six elementary teams were Hillcrest PDS, Lake Eyre Montessori, Mountain View, West Avenue Elementary, Crestview Elementary, and Alta Vista Elementary. The top middle school teams were Tennyson, Indian Spring, and Lake Eyre Montessori. Congratulations to all of those campuses, all of our campuses for participating, especially virtually during COVID time. I have COVID-19 update on the agenda. I really just wanted to add to the recognition earlier for Ascension Providence by taking the opportunity to thank Kyle DeBeer, our Chief of Staff, Rhiannon Settles, our Director of Nursing, and Laura Robertson, our Director of Communication, for their work to organize and facilitate the vaccination clinics. They put in a lot of time on Saturdays and prior to each of the two events that we've had to make sure that everything ran smoothly, and it certainly has paid off, and we're not done, because each of those clinics now requires a second shot. So double duty, and we're really appreciative of them. Winter storm response. That's right. Tricky topic. We had yet another curveball thrown at us this school year, as you know. We had the big storm last week, and so I want to thank our facilities and maintenance team who prepared our buildings in advance of the storm, which really resulted in the damage being minimized. They saw the storm coming. They began to take action on Tuesday, February 9th, ahead of our late starts that were Thursday and Friday, the 11th and 12th. Their preparations included shutting down irrigation, disconnecting water hoses, turning off water supply to our greenhouses, checking and covering exterior equipment, and then controlling our HVAC systems. We did have about a quarter of our facilities that experienced some kind of leak or other damage, but it was our older facilities that suffered the most damage. Waco High School, Carver Middle School, and Alta Vista Elementary were the locations with the most significant issues. Waco High School had a fire suppression, sprinkler heads burst in the Performing Arts Center, as well as some issues with the boiler system, which is used for heating and air conditioning. The boiler system in the PAC area will need to be replaced, as well as the heat water pump in the science wing. There's also a heating water leak underground between the boiler room and the competition gym that has been isolated while we wait on repairs. Carver Middle School had a leak in the locker room area off the old gymnasium. That resulted in pretty much total loss of that gymnasium flooring, and that's in the old gym that was just repaired this past summer, I believe. And Alta Vista had a leak in the back hallway, which flooded the library and the classrooms in that area. By the time I went out to the campus on Friday night, the water was pretty much up in the classrooms, was pretty much gone. We had fans in drying it, but the library had carpet, and so they were taking up the carpet and then making the repairs there. And then finally, there was significant damage at the athletic stadium on New Road, where the fire suppression system, sprinkler system broke in the press box, and the elevator is damaged as a result of that, and we will likely need to replace it due to its age and the availability of parts. It's obsolete, and so...and if you've been on that elevator, you know, it needed some help anyway. So...
We're rolling out a license.
Yeah, so all in all, we believe damages may approach up to $500,000, but we do think it could have been far worse had our team not prepared in advance and then responded in a timely manner during the storm. So I think we fared pretty well, all things considered. And then I know we're already getting some information about FEMA, opportunities to apply for some reimbursements through FEMA for underinsured areas. We do have a high deductible, as you know, TAS.
For this particular thing, it's only $100,000.
Say it again.
For this particular thing, it's only $100,000.
So we will get it all repaired then. And then finally, I do want to say thank you to Cliff Reese, our Director of Child Nutrition Services. He was out checking all of the kitchens and responded quickly to make sure that we had weekend deliveries in anticipation of school starting on Monday, and we are very excited that we got to have school on Monday. We saw that many districts did not, and we were pleased to be able to bring our kids back to school. So tonight, we have two items that you'll see in the agenda. One is the missed school day waiver for most of last week that will allow us to not make up the missed days. That item is in consent, and then Dr. Gutierrez will discuss the resolution for wage payments and the repair and replacement of damaged school equipment and facilities. That's all.
Madam President.
Yes, sir.
I would like to recommend that next month that we recognize all of our maintenance workers for the outstanding job, because if it wasn't for them, I mean, you know, like I say, it's always where the rubber meets the road, and they met the challenge, and I think that we should recognize them, because as Dr. Kincaid said, I've seen on TV and news reports, there are some school districts that's going to be closed for the rest of the week, and the amount of damage that we had, we can only thank our maintenance crew for being on time. So I think we should recognize the entire crew next month for...I don't know, give them some type of recognition, workers of the year or what else.
Thank you for that. We do have three gentlemen that we are recognizing as Employees of the Month through our Human Resources Employee Recognition Program. They were some of the guys that really went above and beyond. There was one who even walked two miles to get to our Facilities Department in the cold so he could get what he needed, and so thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Manning. We will do that.
Thank you.
All right, next we have our consent agenda, and I've been asked to pull Item D. Is there any other item any member of the Board would like to have pulled for further Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Item D.
Admon.
Thank you, Mr. DePuy.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Sykes. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none passes unanimously. Now, we have the bid renewal for bank depository services, and it's my understanding, Mr. Sykes, that's so that you can abstain?
I will need to abstain.
Is there any item, anything we need to discuss about that? Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid renewal for bank depository services.
Admon.
Thank you, Mr. DePuy. Thank you, Mr. Manning. Is there a second? All those in favor, say aye.
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 And Mr. Sykes, abstention.
Thank you.
Okay, I noticed that we have Mr. Trailer here, so why don't we bump you up so we can get you on your way to review and discuss the 2021 refunding of 100...wow, that's a big number.
[laughing].
$106 million.
That's correct.
$740,000 in unlimited taxable refunding bonds from Series 14, 15, and 16. Welcome.
Madam President, members of the School Board, Dr. Kincaid. Again, my name is Dusty Trailer, Managing Director with RBC Capital Markets. It is my honor and privilege to just discuss with you tonight, as your financial advisor, the results of the sale of your unlimited tax refunding bond, Series 2021. As you know, in August, the School Board approved a parameters resolution to refinance a portion of the district's outstanding bonds in anticipation of being able to save debt service on those bonds. At the time, we were looking at a refinancing of approximately $77.25 million, and at the time, the estimated savings was approximately $8,353,000. Over the course of the next weeks and months, interest rates kind of ebbed and bobbed around a little bit, and especially got really choppy as we moved into the presidential election season, and so we kind of tapped the brakes there, but we got going really full bore to get moving and get moving. and get moving past the election season, and it really paid off. We were able to refinance, as you said, Mr. Kell, 106,740,000 of the district's Series 2014, 2015, and 2016 bonds. And the total debt service savings from that refinancing actually works out to 15.874 million dollars over the remaining life of those bonds. That is a tremendous result, and we just want to congratulate the district on obtaining those fantastic results. Your team does a fantastic job of representing you in these matters. There is a lot that, while we're the financial advisor and we do a tremendous amount of work ourselves, we cannot do that work without your team. And your team does a fantastic job of representing you in these matters, representing the district in rating agency discussions, wrangling the underwriters in disclosure matters, and all the legal things that go into this. There's a lot behind the scenes that go into it. So, we really appreciate the hard work of the district and are delighted with this amount of savings that you're able to obtain. I was looking at this, you know, you'll note, one of the things to note is the Series 2014, 15, and 16 bonds themselves were already refunding bonds. You guys had already taken action previously to lower your borrowing costs, but this was another opportunity to even further lower those borrowing costs this time. So, if we go back and look, dating all the way back to 2010, this is the sixth time that the district has refinanced outstanding bonds. And over the course of those six refinancings, the district has saved approximately $33 million in taxpayer money. So, again, a great example here of Waco ISD being great stewards of taxpayer dollars here in the district and taking advantage of what the market's giving you to lower the burden, hopefully, on the taxpayers of Waco Independent School District. One other thing to point out, part of this is, we had to visit with the bond rating agency. One of your rating agencies is Moody's. We just went with the Moody's rating on this one. The district has historically had a bond rating of AA2 from Moody's. I think that dates back, Cheryl, to 2010, and we were able to maintain that AA2 rating for the district. And that is, you know, everybody says, oh, well, you maintain the rating. That's a big deal. But given what we're under during these COVID times, that is also a positive development. So, again, congratulations on that as well.
Thank you so much.
Any questions that you may have for me on the process?
Just a comment. Dusty, thank you for your presentation, and certainly the results speak for themselves. We very much appreciate the work that you've done in relation to our crack finance department because the results of that 33 million mentioned and the 15 million now, tremendous, tremendous return to the district. In addition to that, let me say, when you step back a little bit from a time, with the volatility of the markets right now, interest rates are all over everywhere, timing is everything. And you and finance have nailed this one, and we are so appreciative of your work and the conjunction, the collaboration with our department at Waco ISD. Very much appreciate that.
Well, thank you. I was talking with Cheryl earlier, and the timing was absolutely important. Had we, let's just say we would have been in the market today, our savings levels would not have been as great as they were by us being in the market three weeks ago. So, it really did work out tremendously well.
I'd like to talk to you about what you see the markets doing.
Yeah, I'll need to shout out my crystal ball. Sure, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you for coming out to.
Yeah, total interest cost. So, the all-in TIC for these bonds was a 1.66%. TIC is an industry term that takes into consideration not only just the straight-up yield on the bonds, it takes into consideration, do what? Transaction costs, and even the call feature. In this case, the call feature really didn't move the TIC much, but in a normal tax exempt deal, it would. But that's what TIC stands for.
Those are the different things. These are what they would have been, and this is what we finally got.
That's right, that's right.
Timing is everything.
Correct.
All right, thank you, Dusty.
You're welcome. Well, thank you all. Y'all have a great night. Thank you.
All right, so we'll head back up in the agenda to the resolution for wage payments and repair and replacement of damaged school equipment and facilities due to severe winter weather. Dr. Gutierrez.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board. The week of February 15th was really challenging for all of our staff, and this resolution serves the public purpose of maintaining morale, reducing turnover, and ensuring continuity for reopening our schools on the Monday like we did. And we have a substantial public interest in protecting the health and safety of our employees, students, staff, and all our community. And we are asking today that you approve this resolution to continue wage payments to all regular employees that were instructed not to report to work for the week of February 15th through the 19th, and to institute premium pay for non-exempt employees who did come to work at a rate of time and one half. And then also to repair, to assist us in replacing and repairing school equipment and facilities, delegating to the superintendent the ability to execute on contracts and services of over $50,000 and to make budget amendments. So, we recommend that you approve this resolution as presented to you, and thank you in advance for your support.
Anybody have any questions?
Yeah, Daisy, and I don't have this in front of me. I'm wondering, okay, so just to be clear, if you're instructed to stay home, you stay home, you get your full pay anyway?
Yes.
If you show up, time and a half?
Yes.
You'll get your request to come in, and you do come in.
Yes, non-exempt employees.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I'll entertain a motion.
That's so moved.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Ms. Corlag and Ms. Houston, for seconding the motion. Is there any further discussion? I just want to thank you. You know, I thought last week about all the people who, on top of everything else, not having any heat, not having any water, the idea of actually losing a week's worth of pay and how terrifying that must have been for everybody. So, I'm really, well, I hadn't passed yet, and I guess we should vote you up first, but I, I'm, thank you for bringing it forward, and I like being able to take care of folks. So, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously.
Thank you for taking care of employees.
Thank you, yes.
We know they're grateful.
All right, number nine, bid award or ranking of proposals related to, let me get the item, irrigation system at University High School. Mr. Villanueva? There he is.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Ken Cannon. First of all, I just want to say thank you for trusting our department and delivering quality projects that will result in a benefit to the district. Tonight, we would like to go and just bring an overview of the irrigation project improvements at University High School. I think I brought, there's three slides that is going to help us basically have a better understanding of what the project is all about, also the benefits that's going to bring to the district, and just a layout of where those areas are going to be. So, let's go over first the project description. So, it's the improvement of the existing irrigation system, installation of a new Hunter control system with central web-based program, replaced effective piping, fittings, joints, valves, sprinklers, and/or to eliminate leakage problems. So, the initial budget for this project was $250,000. The lowest bid response that we got was $228,578, well below our established initial budget. And the project timeline is about five months from whenever we award the project to, and the notice to proceed, all the way out to the closeout procedures for this project. So, there's a milestone here where we more or less propose a schedule for that project, and you will see that it runs all the way to August, but August is really just for closeout procedures, really. So, when we go to the next slide. So, like all projects, we would like to always emphasize on the benefits that each project brings to the district. So, first is on the maintenance side. This would improve the response time and breakage, eliminate the need of heavy equipment for repairs. So, there's a lot of trust valves and other items that are well below ground. So, whenever we have to do repairs, we have to go out there with heavy equipment, dig them out, and perform the repairs. So, this project will eliminate those issues. It would improve in our response time and would eliminate labor and also, you know, the need for heavy equipment. The other benefit that it brings is water management. So, it's going to reduce the consumption, just because it's going to be on the control system, and it's going to improve the overall water management of the project. As a third benefit is, a lot of these components are well above a ground level, so they have become a trip hazard in those areas. So, we want to eliminate that, just because those are areas that it's really high usage of our students. So, we have football field, we have the practice fields, we have band practice areas. So, we want to eliminate those systems that are well beyond the ground level so they don't become a trip hazard, as I said. So, we're trying to, just try to take and control everything that's in the project. Last one is a control system upgrade. It's a full control system with connectivity to online weather updates that will adjust the schedule automatically. What this means is that we would build in a schedule for the irrigation system to go in effect, but it's also going to be linked into the forecast of the weather. So, whenever it sees that there is going to be a rain event that week, the schedule will automatically adjust, and it would not use water, just because it recognizes that there's going to be a rain event. The next slide. That's actually the photo shot of Google Earth of UHS. So, it's going to bring the benefit of the football area, practice fields, the band practices also on, next to the baseball and softball fields, and also all the green areas that it's going to maintain. Overall, the bids came in, as I said before, under the initial budget, so we're requesting that the project is approved so we can move forward with it. And also, I'm open to any questions that you may have regarding the project.
I might add, this was a high priority for me after taking a tour of the University High School campus and walking out there with Coach Tusa, and just really is a safety issue, I think, too, because there are a lot of holes in the ground on those fields, and I really, I really don't think it's very safe to have a field like that for our students. We, one of the problems was just the water. They just couldn't get enough water to the field, so the system just really needed an overhaul, and we had our architects take a look at that and work with our Facilities Department to come up with a plan.
And we initially installed a BRF pump, which is a variable frequency pump. What it does, it doesn't shoot the pressure all at once, so it starts ramping up slowly, but it needed to have that brains, you know, that basically controls the system, and also it needed to be basically improved overall so we can have the benefit of having a, you know, really good field. Our kids, you know, deserve to have a, that's going to help them, you know, whenever they're practicing, especially sports, it's going to help them in the knee, with the knees, you know, that type of sports activities.
I just, I guess at this point, now that, I don't think you were here, but 10 years ago, who, how old is this thing?
Around 10, 11 years, yes. That's correct.
Who were those architects? Okay. And I guess I hadn't heard anything about this previously, I guess compliance, but this has been ongoing. And Susan, you said this has been a part of the field.
Absolutely, there are lots of cracks and holes in the field, and.
It's just, and that's just inability to get, we can't get enough water.
Can't get enough water, and there are so many fields lined up right there. They can't, the pressure's low, it's low, and they couldn't get it all the way across and then cycle back through, and they just couldn't get enough water to keep that field in good shape. It's the way I understood it from talking to Coach Tusa, and then Jared came in and took a look at it, and they worked with this landscape architect to come up with the scope of work to improve the system, and so that's what we're bringing forward to you. It's a lot of money, so I wanted you all to have the opportunity to talk about it this evening.
Madam President? My question is, I support this because I know it's needed, but have we looked at any other areas and schools that may have the same problem?
No, we, I haven't identified any other competition fields like this. And you, if Alex, if you're aware of something, speak up, but I don't know of any myself personally. But this one was, you know, it was pretty obvious just from, for me, looking at it, that it was, you know, we had a tripping hazard for our kids, and we needed to take care of it.
And this particular, you know, area has a lot of, like, practice areas, the football area, so there's a lot of areas that are included in this irrigation system. High schools are our biggest campuses, you know, it's where really, you know, a lot of extracurricular activities go on. So, yes, I don't think there's much of an issue in other campuses that we may have. UHS was really, you know, a high priority to get that fixed.
Yeah, Waco High School, we will be taken care of with the Paul Tyson replacement project, so this, your point is good. It's a high school campus, there's a lot of activity on those fields, football in particular, but also soccer is played out there, and the baseball and softball fields are there as well. So, it will bring, it will take care of it.
Well, with the increased activities, we're going to be looking at our middle schools. I'm just wondering, are we going to go ahead and double-check them just to make sure that they are good also?
It's a great question. We'll be, as we work through the facilities planning process, we're talking about our middle schools, and so we'll certainly want to make sure those fields are in good shape, too. I didn't notice any problems, I didn't notice any problems particularly there, but I probably did take a closer look at University High School with it being a high school campus, and just actually rode all over it on a golf cart, looking at it with Coach Tusa. So, you know, there's just a lot of activity there.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
The water bill's going to go up.
Sorry? No, actually, it should, should come down. No, we're not, we're not getting enough water to the areas that we need to get water, but the consumption is there. This is going to help us with the, we're going to install also flow sensors. Sorry?
I was saying, if we're not using more water, then you're taking water from somewhere else, and you're going to put it on the same spot.
No, we're using the same, we're going to use, like I said, it's a problem with the distribution of the water. The water is being pulled from the main. The issue that we have in it is that there's a lot of breakages that lead to leaks, to just having to fix all the fields. The amount of water that is getting to these areas, sometimes it doesn't really get there because of pressure problems, but it's, you know, the amount of water is being, you know, sent to those areas. It's just leaks, like I said. Like I said, the scheduling of the smart system is not really satisfying the need of the fields.
Madam President, I move that we accept the administration's recommendation.
Oh, sorry.
Or the irrigation project at University High School and authorize the superintendent to negotiate and execute the projects on behalf of the district as presented.
Oh, very well done. Thank you, Mr. Pollock, for a second. Any further discussion?
Just don't get the valves too close to the ground, it freezes. Leave them fairly deep, right? Deep enough?
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Passes unanimously. Thank you for your work on that. And I'm sure that campus is very relieved to have that happen.
Coach Lester will be happy.
Yes. Okay, Miss Quinlan, where are you at? Twenty twenty-one, twenty-two instructional calendar. We've looked at this already, right?
Well, the last time we looked at it, we were bringing it because we removed the instructional minutes. Yeah, so yes, this is, this is the calendar, it's calendar three. So we're presenting it tonight for your consideration and approval. As you know, the Texas Education Code requires districts to provide at least seventy-five thousand six hundred minutes. And so in the making of this calendar, that is taken care of. And then we are a district of innovation in Waco ISD. So we are exempt from state law that generally requires instruction for students to begin earlier than the fourth Monday in August. And the, and scheduling the last day of instruction prior to May fifteenth. And so those considerations were taken into account when building the calendar as well. With this calendar that we are presenting, the staff start date would be August sixth. Our new teachers would return on August third. Students would return on August twenty-third. Teachers would have one hundred and eighty-seven contract days as required. Our students would have one hundred and seventy-one days. The total minutes would be seventy-six thousand nine fifty. That would give us one thousand three hundred and fifty extra minutes in the year. We have two early release days and we didn't have those built into the calendar this year. And so those would come before Thanksgiving and winter break. We have sixteen staff development days, but part of those sixteen, though, are those initial return weeks when teachers come back. We have a few, or a couple less than what we had this year in terms of, we tried to put a staff development day each six weeks. So it's just a little bit less there. Thanksgiving break would be November twenty-second through twenty-sixth. And winter break is December twentieth through the thirty-first. We actually wouldn't return until after the first, but that hits on a weekend. So the actual end of the break would be considered the thirty-first. Spring break would be March seventh through the eleventh. And that does align with the spring breaks of other universities and colleges around us. We have a bad weather day scheduled for February twenty-third, or twenty-first, rather. And then we have additional student staff holidays of September ninth, October the eleventh, January seventeenth, and April fifteenth. The calendar was put out for voting. And then this one was presented to QDAC on February eighth for their approval. Overall, this calendar actually received almost fifty percent of the vote overall. And then calendar one and two were almost divided equally between the votes that they received, the remaining percentage there. So we are asking the board to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two instructional calendar as presented.
I even hope to not have to change it five months.
We hope. But that, that really worked to our benefit, so that.
I move that we accept the administration's recommendation for the instructional calendar. As presented.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none. Passes unanimously. Thank you. Dr. Gutierrez, you're up again. Review and discuss opportunity culture residency design cohort program.
Yes, good evening again. I think I have some slides that they'll put up. Yes, it's my pleasure to present to you tonight an update on opportunity culture. I believe I was, I presented opportunity culture back in October. And you approved an MOU. And I just wanted to let you know about all the work that's been happening. And while we're waiting on the slide deck, we did hire our opportunity culture director. Her name is Samey McCowen. And Samey's been up and running since December. So we thank her for all of her work. All right. That's the last slide. Thank you very much. It's been, it's been a good night. Okay, I'll go ahead and get started. Oh, you have it in front of you? Okay, perfect. All right, so, so opportunity culture, again, is, is not a program. And some people will refer to it as a program, but it's really a commitment. And it's a commitment to reach all students with excellent teaching. So the, the concept here is that you'll have excellent teachers reaching more and more students. And also, it's an opportunity to give our educators a career pathway and opportunities to be, have more teacher leadership opportunities in their role as a teacher. And this work all started, it's a strategic partnership. There's lots of partners involved in this. You know, we have Prosper Waco, who we're in MOU with to support our director. The opportunity culture consulting and support is coming from Public Impact. And our, the universities that we're working with here are Texas Tech and Tarleton. And so they are the ones who will be providing our resident teachers. Our US Prep is, is helping the universities prepare these teachers. And all of this has been made possible by a large grant by Bill and Melinda Gates. And they're also offering us an abundance of training, excellent training. So we've been engaged in that work, too, since December. So it's been a really great partnership. And like I said, there's a number of partners here. And this work, as you know, there's over a thousand school districts in the state of Texas. But Waco ISD is at the vanguard of this work. Because you can see that it currently, it's a national initiative. But currently, it's, it's only in fourteen school districts in the state of Texas. So all eyes are watching the heart of Texas here at Waco ISD. And we partner specifically with La Vega, so we engage in this work with La Vega ISD. And we're great thought partners with them, and we enjoy their thought partnership, too. We have now selected the five schools. We started at the elementary level. We, we want to ensure that the launch is successful. So we thought that if we had the five elementary schools with, we selected the schools that didn't have competing initiatives with strong leadership and, and leaders who said, I want to do this, I believe in this. And, and so we selected the five that are before you, Crestview, Dean Highland, Kendrick, Parkdale, and Providence Heights. And then the challenges. So these are the challenges nationally that this commitment tries to overcome. However, it's not any different here in Waco. We know that teachers often work alone without enough support. We know that excellent teachers have limited options to, to take on those teacher leadership roles and distribute leadership in their school. We know that we lose excellent teachers because of pay. They get promotions and they change careers for more money. We also know that, that we're not quite at the point where we have consistent teaching, excellent teaching in every classroom. And that's always a goal of every school district, but definitely one of our goals. And we know that our principles are stretched too thin. You know, they, they do their best to get in those classrooms, to coach teachers. But at the end of the day, we're going to need teacher leaders to help them do this work and to, to develop other teachers to that level of excellence. So those are our challenges. And when we came together with the partners, we, we talked about results. And we really had a long list of results that we are hopeful in achieving through this, through this commitment. But I just picked a few. You know, of course, one is always the impact we make on student learning. You know, the public perception about our district being a stable and highly qualified, having a stable and highly qualified teaching force is very important to us, which connects to the next one of retention rates. You know, when, when we arrived, the retention rates, you know, the attrition rate is like, was like twenty-six percent, and it's been reduced tremendously. But we hope to continue to reduce that, that number and retain our teachers, especially our great teachers. We also, because it's an educator pipeline, we're also going to be involved in preparing and supporting teachers. And of course, we'll, we'll strengthen satisfaction and longevity. Because through teacher leadership, when teachers have a voice, when teachers have, get the opportunity to, to become teacher leaders, we know that that, that assists us in the, in the retention of teachers. And then, of course, teacher efficacy, when teachers believe that their students can, can achieve. Even, even when students are difficult to teach at times, they still believe they have the ability to do that. That is so important in this work. And then diversifying our candidate pool. It's important for our community, for our kids, and for our success. So we really have high hopes for the, for the results of this work. There are several roles, teacher roles, and we've just recently posted these roles. But there will have teacher residents, we'll have reach associates. Reach associates, I'm going to go from the bottom to the top because this is like, this is how teachers move up the ranks. The reach associate is, is actually an excellent paraprofessional who assists a teacher, who gets extensive training and who hopefully, you know, we're grooming them to become teachers. And we have master team reach teachers and team reach teachers. So there's two levels there. And these are teachers who are masterful at what they do. And they also may extend their reach to more students than just their, their typical homeroom classes. The master teacher may actually be coaching some additional teachers, not only reaching more students. And the MCL, or the multi-classroom leader, is someone who, who may lead the PLCs. They're going to be in the classrooms, they'll be working, they'll be teaching half-day, and they'll be coaching the other half. And so they'll be developing other teachers through, through lesson planning and through coaching, observation, and feedback. So we're really excited about these different levels of, of teacher leadership roles. When we bring the compensation plan to you for approval, these are the recommendations we will be making. So not only will our teachers be making their base salary, they will also be provided with stipends to do this extra. I mean, this is an extra lift to, to coach teachers and to help other teachers plan on top of your own planning. So we'll be recommending that reach associates get a two thousand dollar additional pay, team reach teachers twenty-five hundred, a master team reach teacher five thousand, and a MCL would make thirteen thousand dollars. And again, this is in addition to their base salary. We've engaged in, in many stakeholder engagements. You know, we want you to know that this isn't work being done in isolation or in a silo. This is, we've had a district design team and it has impacted just about every department in this, in this district. The school design teams are, you could see they're made up of principals, assistant principals, teachers, counselors, ISs, instructional aides. And then we have other engagement strategies that we've engaged in. Mrs. McCowen has already launched a district and school design subcommittee to work through some of, some of the other details. We've presented to QDAC and will continue to give updates to QDAC. We've had school information sessions at each of these campuses. The word's already out, and I've had, have some other principals who are really interested, who are just like, you can, let's just wait. Well, let's get this launched. But it's good that the excitement is starting to, to get going. And then Ms. Carradine and I will be doing some teacher association updates. And we'll be sharing this with our teacher associations. And I think there was one more thing there. And then recruitment events. You know, this is a, this is a huge, you know, we've got TIA. Now we'll have opportunity culture, the potential of what teachers can do here in Waco ISD. You know, I was calculating the average pay, like on the low end, if a teacher's designated at a master's level, if a teacher is a MCL through opportunity culture. And, you know, our competitive salaries, I mean, their salary is going to get pretty close to six figures. And well deserved, when you get results and you're working hard like that, you, you deserve that. So we're really excited about that. And so in Region Twelve, we're going, we're going to sell that in our recruitment, for sure. So a design team updates. Like I said, the design teams have been very busy. The district design team, we've set a vision, we have some guiding practices and set up some resources for schools. We set the stipend amounts that I just shared with you, the career roles that I shared with you. We've done BEI, the Behavior Event Training. I think we trained like, I don't know, at least a dozen of our staff. So it's a new way to interview, interview especially teachers and even leaders to see if they have the leadership competencies to do this work. So we're taking a whole different approach to our interviewing. And, and then, of course, we've developed a recruitment and selection process, and it is robust. And it is, it is rigorous. So we, we feel very confident in what, how we're going to move forward with this. The school design teams, again, they're made up of the principals, assistant principals, some teachers. They have developed a theory of action and how they're going to measure their success. And they've done a wonderful job with that. They have their staffing plans, a sustainability plan. Because we do want this to be sustainable within the existing budget. So it, you know, we're not asking for additional money to make this work. And then in progress is their communications planning. Because we know that they need to communicate this effectively to their staff, parents, and all other stakeholders. It's very important to, to communicate. And then they'll be engaging in the school level selections. Although we will have, for the MCLs, we'll have a district level pool, schools will still be selecting their staff for these roles. And I'm not going to speak much about this because you have it before you. But I just want you to see who's on the school design teams for each of these five campuses and their roles. Again, it just emphasizes that this is not being done, you know, in, in any silo or just a district team. It's, it's really campus voice, designing their own, their own model. And that's it. So any questions?
I don't have, I don't have a question, but I appreciate your presentation and, and going back, talking over, moving it forward. I can't think of a better opportunity we have coming through what we've been through for the last, we know the time period, leading up through last week, getting ready for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year. I can't think of a better way that, that we can lay the groundwork to, to build on or rebuild on things that need to be done to focus on student outcomes, focusing on, on teachers, recruitment, retention, all those things that we've talked about. And this seems like it's an incredible opportunity to consolidate all those things and just rebuild and continue to build in the direction that we know is right for WISD. So I'm, I'm looking forward to hearing more, seeing more, and thank you for your effort. Appreciate your presentation.
Yep, thank you. Anyone else? Any other questions?
I don't have any questions either, but I just want to echo what was just said. I'd just say that's very exciting to see this happening for our teachers. And anything that's building towards better teaching and retention of our amazing teachers is, I think, a great direction to go because it benefits our teachers and it benefits all of our students.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, and I think that shared leadership with the teachers is probably one of the most critical aspects of improving student achievement and really getting them involved in helping their peers. And this project does that. And so, as you saw, we were one of the few that are doing this. And so you add the layer of TIA, which is significant amount of money. If we meet, if we're meeting targets because of our student population, there really is an opportunity for Waco ISD here to capture some really great teachers who can make some more money working in our schools, and we're excited about that.
I think, you know, I want to echo everything that everyone has said. But I also think this is a great kind of pipeline. Because I remember my first years teaching, you know, teaching has become this art where you kind of learn the theories and you know the curriculum, you know the teaks. But the art of teaching is something that you have to almost watch someone do. So I remember vet teachers coming into my classroom, just kind of walking. So I remember vet teachers coming into my classroom, just kind of walking by and kind of basically showing me in a very quick, two-minute kind of mentoring, uh, uh, how to, how to learn the art of teaching and how to get kids motivated or how to, you know, uh, just kind of present something a little bit differently. And so I just think, you know, these, these MCLs, I mean, if you get these high-level teachers in there who can go into the classroom and not just coach, but really kind of demonstrate and show these teachers, man, we could really get a great pipeline. I mean, I think, you know, we've got these Tarleton, you've got, you know, Texas Tech, you have Baylor here also. I mean, there's, there is a pipeline of teachers, you know, and so I think this is a very, um, uh, a great training model. And I'm, I'm really excited to see, um, in a couple of years, what this looks like. And the pay isn't bad.
Um, Josie, I assume since we didn't vote on it, that I guess somehow the foundation is behind the stipends and that they're funding that for, what's their commitment there? Period of time?
What, what is the commitment?
The Gates, uh, I, I assume the Gates Foundation is funding these stipends? No, that's coming out of our budget.
The Gates Foundation is funding our opportunity culture director for a couple of years.
Okay, so the stipends though would come out of our budget. Okay.
Yes.
Which, if we see the results, it'd be easy money to spend. I, I don't have a problem there.
Absolutely.
Okay. And so how long is the Gates money there for?
A couple of years, two years to fund our director.
Okay.
Uh, uh, Madam President. Uh, my question is, have we, uh, been in contact with any of the, uh, well, I guess the, uh, statewide HBCUs? Uh, also, I, I know we have mentioned Baylor and, and, and our local colleges here in, in, uh, in Waco, but are, are we in contact with, uh, like, uh, the old Paul Quinn up in Waco? Uh, I mean, I'm sorry, up in Dallas, uh, Texas Southern down in, um, uh, Houston and other HBCUs in the state of Texas? Uh, to, uh, reach out and kind of get teachers from those two?
Trustee Manny, at this point, at this time, we're not, but we do foresee an expansion. And, and those universities that you just mentioned, I think could definitely be considered in an, in the expansion. At this point, we're starting with these two universities, but, uh, we do, um, like I said, see an expansion even with our PDS and how to make those models more robust. Um, so I think in time, we definitely could and will pursue other, other partners, cause we'll have to, to expand our, our pool.
A majority minority, uh, district, I, I, I assume as we can do that, I think that would be helpful. And, uh, and, and like, like I said, we, um, we, we lost a lot of minority teachers when Paul Quinn moved up to, uh, Dallas and everything. And, um, and I, I, I will talk to Dr. Ken Callan. There's a possible pipeline for us to work on relationship with them and I will, we'll talk to Dr. Ken Callan about that.
Okay.
This, uh, this particular project is with our local Texas Tech and, um,
Tarleton.
Tarleton State University, but we can, we're still doing jo- well, I don't know with COVID, but we still have the opportunity to attend and recruit at job fairs from any university or college. And that may have been happening, but I don't.
Oh, yes. We have an entire recruiting calendar that, uh, gets started in March, goes well into May. So, yes, and we're going, it, they're all virtual, but we will be interacting and going to job fairs with as many universities as possible.
Does that include Paul Quinn and Texas Southern, you know?
I believe it does. I think Texas Southern is on there. It's like two or two, three pages. I'd have to go back and check. I can get back with you and then you can, we can get it back to Mr. Manny. Yep.
Well, i- if you will, if you just, uh, send me a list of the HBCUs, I would appreciate it.
Okay. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. All right, thank you.
Well, goodness, Cornblum, it seems like we could.
Well, hello again. Um, tonight, um, we are presenting the first reading of the policy EIC Local. Um, EIC Local defines how grade point averages will be calculated to determine class rank and local honors for high school graduates. Beginning in November, um, we began, um, with a policy review committee and Denise Bell helped facilitate that. There were around thirty members and, um, that committee was comprised of district and high school administrators, counselors, teachers, parents. Um, we had students on the committee. We had a board member on the committee, um, as well as, um, some members from, um, MCC and Baylor. And we met four times to discuss, um, the policy and to review other policies and think through changes. And as a part of the review, the committee, um, looked at eight other districts. Um, and I'm sure that there were other people who looked at other policies in between as well. And as a result, the attached draft, um, of, uh, policy EIC Local includes the following recommendations. Um, beginning with the graduating class of twenty twenty-four, um, the, the way that class rank, um, is calculated and the classes that, um, are involved in that, we are recommending that the weighted grade point average will be based on high school semester grades earned in advanced placement courses taken in grades six through eight and in high school, um, which will be nine through twelve in these courses, English, math, science, social studies, economics, languages other than English, and then all due credit courses in those same areas as well. Um, also within that eligible courses will be weighted using a four-tier system rather than a three-tier system. And the four-tier system in, in that tier four would be advanced placement courses and they would have a multiplier of one point two oh. Tier three would be our dual credit courses with a multiplier of one point one five. And tier two would be pre-advanced courses multiplied by one point one oh. And then all other eligible courses would be multiplied by one. And then, um, the following recommendation would apply to all students regardless of their graduating class. So what I just read would phase in with our seniors of twenty twenty-four. Um, this next part would be, um, would phase in now. So to be eligible for local honors, a student must have been continuously enrolled in the same district high school for four semesters immediately preceding graduation, have been enrolled and in attendance in at least four academic courses each year of high school, be graduating after exactly eight semesters of enrollment in high school and have completed the foundation program with the distinguished level of achievement. And for the purpose of breaking ties, um, we are recommending that, um, GPA would be calculated to the fourth decimal point. And then after the calculation to that, um, fourth decimal point, then we would calculate a weighted numerical grade average using eligible classes from tier four, three and two. So we would take, tier one wouldn't be included there if there was a tie and after the, going to the fourth decimal point. And then if the tie isn't broken, after that point, the district shall recognize all students involved in the tie as sharing the honor and the title. So I know that EIC Local is a big policy. So I want to pause for a second to ask if you have any questions about some of those recommendations.
This is a big change for this policy. So you typically have to look at which courses are included in your calculations. That's a change here. You also have, um, some decisions to make about AP and dual credit. That's typically a question. And so this, that, there's a change here with AP getting more credit. Um, what else?
Um, the, the biggest, uh, those are large changes is, um, looking at the courses that we're looking at. Um, the previous policy included all courses basically, and then students, um, could exclude two. Um, and the, the committee had a very, um, lengthy discussion about this. Uh, because, you know, you can look at that in two ways, but one, in, in terms of including a lot, we might look at that provides a lot of equity for our students or does narrowing it provide equity? And so that is one thing that we have to consider, because that, that really was the aim of looking at this policy in general, was to ensure that we were giving all students a level playing field and they had access to the same courses as well as providing clarity, um, for our counselors and, um, you know, our school administrators as they're working um, on those, um, class rankings. And so that was a big, um, discussion. And that, that probably is one of the biggest changes minus going to the four-tier system.
And then the, the, um, the timing of having to be enrolled is a change as well. We did bump up against some issues with people enrolling dur- during their senior year. Um, and so we wanted to honor our students for local honors who have been with the district. Um, and so that we don't have that, that angst and worry for kids that have been here.
Madam President? Um, I, I don't really have any questions about the, the tier system and, and mine's more of a general comment. One of the thing, I think one of the issues that our current policy has is it just doesn't provide clarity to parents. It doesn't provide clarity to our students. There are a lot of hidden, um, GPA boosts and a lot of hidden GPA traps. And I think that, you know, there's just not, there's, there's, there is a real sense, I think, that there is a lot of unfairness and it was kind of across the board unfairness. It wasn't really necessarily targeting specific types of students. But it's just, it was really hard to sort of navigate it. And one thing I will say about this is I think that this is going to lend a lot of clarity to what we're actually telling our students they have to do in order to have, you know, things that are weighted, things that aren't weighted. And I really commend the committee in coming up with something that I think is going to be transparent for our families and for the counselors and for our students.
Yeah, thank you. Um, and, and that is true. If, if, if you aren't a student who understands the system extremely well, it can be hard to navigate and you could, um, you know, before be in a course that could count for you and your GPA. However, it might not count for another person and, and their GPA because of the path that they're, that they were on. Um, we were talking about this and, you know, a great example is, I, I will use my, my son as an example. So he would have taken algebra as a seventh grader. He took, um, geometry as an eighth grader. So if he were to have gone for the STEM endorsement, you have to go through algebra two and then have two more. Well, he had a free year there to get that second math, whereas a person, a student who didn't know about that going into high school and didn't take at least high school algebra in eighth grade is already sitting at a deficit. They're going to have to double up if they want that, if they headed down the math STEM endorsement path. And so that's an example of, of the confusion and the lack of clarity. And then also, um, some inequity in, in the policy previously. You do have a month, that's correct.
Review and discuss and, um, get any additional feedback or information we need and then it'll be back on our agenda in March.
Correct.
To consider approval.
Dean, one question.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, I interrupted you. Well, I'm just, on the, the time limitation, but the, the amount of time that you need to have been enrolled in your high school in order to, and as I remember, the, the, the one contentious situation we had wasn't actually about valedictorian and salutatorian. It was just about some of those class, right, top ten percent?
Correct. And so. Yeah, if you will, if you look at the actual, um, in the policy that you have in front of you, it talks about as defined in policy as well as, um, district publications. And so in the actual, um, student handbook and in the course guide, it will, that's where it will be defined in terms of all local honors as well. Um.
You still get your class rank.
Oh, you do, yes.
So if you come into the district, you're, you're still ranked, but the time limitation that we want to impose is for the local honors. So that would be Val and Sal. And then what Ms. Cornblum is saying is that we, you know, in the handbook, we might spell out any other honors that we give. And I think sitting on stage has been an honor here that parents look forward to having their kids sit on the stage. That then we would follow that time limitation.
Correct, yeah.
So just to be fair to kids who have been in Waco ISD. And there may be cords, you know, you typically.
I, I guess I was saying more about college admissions.
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, for college admissions, it doesn't.
You still get your rank for college admissions. No, yeah.
Really, this is outward purposes, because that's stated in, in statute. And so you still get your rank regardless.
We don't have any impact on that.
No.
Alrighty then. Thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all, though. I think you're next. I think you're still up.
Well, we're sharing the honors on this.
Okay.
I have about forty-nine slides of data and then Dina has one slide of, what are we going to do about the data? Okay, so, um, I'm sharing. I'm a little nervous about my slides not being up there, but I believe that you have them in your packet in front of you. Okay, okay, so I'll go ahead and get started. Um, and Dr. King Cannon asked me to compile for you a way to measure the COVID nineteen slide, as people are calling it. And so I focused first on grades K through eight, reading and math achievement. So the K through eight is more about, sometimes we'll be talking about last year's first grade and this year's first grade. So I'm going to break down each of these particular areas for you. The first slide that I have talks about what assessments did I use for this piece? So I used Renaissance three sixty and I used MAP, Measure of Academic Progress. Both of these programs are online. They're diagnostic. They're accessible to in-person students and virtual students. So there was no issue with testing there. Both of these programs are da- are called adaptive. They adapt to the student as they're taking the test. So if Denise is taking the tests and I'm starting to get questions wrong, it's going to start to measure where my, where am I really at, to give the teacher some instructional pieces. And it also goes up. It'll go all the way to grade twelve. So those were the two programs I used for data gathering. What data did I use from them? Well, the Renaissance people did a national study using five million students' grades data. And so they, their study gave us a point of reference to be, for me to go with. Because I used our Renaissance data from the beginning of the year and the middle of the year this year, but we don't have a screener two years in a row. So next year, what'll be very nice is we'll have Renaissance a second year. Student data will be in there and we'll start to see that longevity, that longitudinal data of students. So what I did was use the national results of the study, our kids' performance on the same exact test. And then I pulled in the MAP results from the middle of the year last year, cause that was right before COVID. And so it's a similar type of test. They all gave me different pieces of data. The demographic representation, I put this slide in. We know our enrollment, so on your right is a chart that talks about our enrollment and demographics. But I put in the Renaissance study demographics for you. If you look at that top box for race and ethnicity, you'll see approximately forty-six percent, we don't know what ethnicity, because Renaissance is just a diagnostic testing program that people use, so they don't have to enter any kind of pieces. So they also didn't earmark students with disabilities or EL students, but five million children across the nation, those students are in there. But I can assure you that they're the exact match of our demographics. Uh, the next part is participation. So, uh, student engagement overall for instruction has been a challenge. So when it comes to collecting data, there's nothing a kid wants to do more than take another test. So it became a challenge for, whoa, why do I have to take this test? So the challenge also was doubled by the fact that some grades were quarantined in different buildings and some were not. So that really was, um, it's a different challenge at every single building for the results. But you'll see, if you look at the yellow lines on there for the total untested students, so these were enrolled children in Waco ISD, virtual and in person, you'll see that when we gave the beginning of year, that's the BOY for math and reading, about three thousand students never took the test. So we don't have any data on their progress in Renaissance. But it got better. You can see in our middle of year, we only had between five and six hundred that didn't take the test. But it got better, you can see in our middle of year, we only had between five and six hundred that didn't take the test. It's not great, I mean, it's five hundred kids, we still need data on and I can't assure you that they're the same kids. So that made it a challenge for me to do comparative data because sometimes the kid only had one piece of data for me to look at. So next, the limitations of the results I'm about to present to you, we don't have the transformation Waco schools. In this particular data, they use MAP and we use Renaissance. Two hundred and forty elementary and seven middle school kids had to have their scores invalidated. Because they were anonymously high, they were. It was like a first grader on an eighth grade reading level, it was very high. But I wanna assure you that they had to go through me, I had the power to, it didn't erase a kid's results. It just didn't include that result, but the principal and their data team had to present to me a case for. This is how we know this child is not at this level and we want real results. And it was almost all of the students who were remote. So they had to present to me from old, from last year's data and old data, so tho- there those students are there. The next limitation of the forty-five hundred and eleven elementary who took MAP last year. And were enrolled this year, eleven percent of them didn't take the beginning of year screener, so again, I had one piece of data on them. For MAP and that was pre-COVID, like it was January, nobody was really thinking about what was going to happen. So it's not like the kids were impacted in those results, but I didn't have another comparative measure. So this data represents a random sample in every sense of the word random, because it was based on the kid's choice to participate. But it still gives us a window, it's it's shining a light on our participation issues, but it gives us a window into what our kids are doing. And I'm gonna shine a light also on what teachers are doing about what everybody's calling the COVID slide. So um the next slide starts with reading data and so what I'm gonna show you here is how many weeks of instruction are the students be- did the students start this year? Behind. So what was the change in student achievement from the beginning of year, uh the beginning of the COVID closure to the beginning of this school year, fall of twenty twenty? There is not a way for me to measure the weeks of instruction because we don't have two years worth of Renaissance data. If we'd had that, I'd be able to say they're behind this much. So to estimate, what I did was I used the expected scale score for students that has always existed for years. The average scale score from the students in the study and the average scale score of Waco ISD children. Using those three, I was able to create a comparative. What were, what did our students start the year with, how far behind were they at the beginning of the year is what the next few slides answer. So it's important to know what a scaled score is, this is how STAR is actually rated as well. A scaled score is, in that second paragraph, it says, it's based on the difficulty of questions and the number of correct responses. So you might have experience with this in SAT and ACT, you know, or professional tests and again, the STAR test, so. I used scaled score for this particular piece because it responds to the student. And it's measuring how many the kid gets correct with how difficult the questions that child actually answered relative to their grade level. So here we go, here's the first of many graphs. So what I did was, the chart you're looking at with the weeks behind, that's the result of the national study. So it overall shows you how far behind re- in reading and math in weeks, children started the year with. So in at the bottom of each, I'll, it goes through math and I'll go through, I'll go through reading and then math. So what I did was, I gave our relative performance, so for example here, that yellow arrow, grade one reading. Nationally, it was up nine points. So for them, you can see the arrow points to close to expectations, they were, they started the year close to expectations. Our students were negative two, which put them at the beginning approximately four to seven weeks behind. Okay, so you can see the next few slides use the scaled score to do this, so grade two, you can see again. The national study had a plus eleven, in scale, we had a minus thirty-five, so the second graders slid back. But that makes sense to me cuz first graders are just require acquiring reading skills. So that six months off makes sense to me with this particular grade level. Third grade is next, nationally up three, we were down twenty-four. So again, that that kind of makes sense to me and again, using the scaled score. Next. Is grade four, and grade four had a significant slide back. But it's not unexpected in the elementary world, grade from going from grade three to grade four is one of the most rigorous jumps you make. And it's one of the most rigorous jumps in the STAR test, so that makes sense to me why we were having students fall back a little more there. Grade five, nationally negative five, we were at negative thirty-three. Grade six was an average of negative six, we had an average of forty-seven. And again, that makes sense to me cuz the kids in grade six didn't really end elementary in any kind of traditional closeout way, so. I can see that crossing over to the middle school. Grade seven was a negative five and we had a negative thirty-six, again, scaled score points. Small moves in a scale score, when you think about what it's measuring, it's measuring the difficulty of the questions and it's measuring. How much the students are responding correctly, so we can see those fallbacks there and the last one is eighth grade. Eighth grade had the most significant, so negative four to a negative fifty-one. Now, I put a note for myself to remind you, the older the student is, the more slide there is to be had. So students studies show, kids already slide back in the summer, we've always known that. So if we know that over a two-month period, you're talking about a six-month period almost under under stressful circumstances. So you can see why the grade eight might slide back that significantly. Let's look at math. So reading is a continuum, it's the best way I can explain it to you. A student can go into first grade reading at a fifth grade level because it just continues to rigor up in reading and what you read becomes more difficult. For math, content has to be taught, if no one ever taught you what a triangle is, you're not gonna learn that intuitively. So there there have to be some taught concepts. So for the math weeks of instruction, again, what was the change in student achievement from the beginning of the closure? They used the same three sets of data points and the math had a more significant effect. So our first slide, grade two, you can, even with the national study, the math slid back further. But in their results, they also said it's because there are some concepts that were not taught or teachers could not be a hundred percent sure of mastery of those math concepts. Our students slid back four hundred and eighty scale points in first and second grade. Grade three nationally dropped negative nine, we dropped to negative four hundred and thirty-seven. So I put the arrow facing that way because it really does depend upon content and teaching and how fast we can do interventions to get them caught up. For how long it would take, but it would definitely take approximately, I I if I was. Forced to give you an estimate, it would take approximately six months to really catch them up like that and that's assuming every kid. Is learning in that intervention piece, so that's grade three. Grade four is next. Grade five, you can see they're all in the four hundreds for Waco ISD, grade five was a three hundred and ninety. Grade six. Grade seven. And grade eight. So now we've seen growth from a lens of a comparison of our students to their national peers. Okay, and where would they fit and what would that look like and so. We wanna think about last year's data of our actual kids compared to this year. So the next thing that I did was ask myself, what was the change in student achievement, I said self. What was the change in student achievement from the beginning of the closure, again, before, this was administered in January. So it's before we even had a rumbling of COVID. To the fall of this year when we took it, so I'm using two different tests here, I'm using the MAP data and the Renaissance data. I can't use the scaled score because the two programs scale differently, but I can use what's called grade level equivalent. And so grade level equivalent is pretty straightforward in what you think it is, if it says one point six, it's a first grader at the sixth month. Okay, so I have the first chart is reading. So you can see I did first through fifth here. The reading MOI mid-year from the spring last year, that was before COVID. That's where our kids were and then the reading at the beginning of a school year after COVID in the summer. Now, if some of those results make you scratch your head, I wanna remind you, this was where I had the lowest sampling of data. Cuz I had to have a kid who took it last year and then was enrolled this year and actually took it this year, you saw that three thousand. So I'm I'm reluctant to fully commit to to these being honest results, but. It gives you that wheelhouse of of what would it look like comparing the two, but the sa- sample is pretty small on this one and so kids not participating made it a challenge. Next slide has the math. And the math follows that same pattern, but you will see that the fifth grade seventy-six percent are below grade level at the beginning of year. So it's, as I said, the older the student, the bigger the possible slide back. The good news to me is that these all may be low numbers, but in the, for the math one, they're in the same zone, like they're close to each other. So that means, yes, there was a slide, however, in in that area, it might not be as big as we think it is, so I'll show you how I dived in a little bit deeper. Next section. So now letting the Renaissance study go to the side, how have our students grown from this year? So we now have Renaissance data from the beginning of the year to the middle of the year. So even though students began an average of well behind their grade level, there actually has been. Some stability is what I'll call it, so the next slide shows the reading. And you can see there's the grade levels. These are the students who had both a BOY and an MOI, a beginning of year score and a middle of year score. So that's why the first grade and eighth grade numbers are a little bit off there. But I want you to notice that none of them drop. They don't go up significantly, but none of them drop. So in this sampling, the first graders were to one point four, just they're to one point six. From the beginning of the year to now, two point two to two point five and so on. One thing you should notice about this though is that the fifth graders is where we begin to see kids falling behind their own grade level. So the fifth graders started the year at fourth grade and they're still at the fourth grade, so they're at one year behind. Sixth grade started at four point five and they're at four point six, so they're two years behind. Seventh grade, four point eight to four point nine, three grade levels behind. And the eighth grade, five to five point two, three grade levels behind. Right, so that again, that makes it a challenge to really know. I'm hopeful for the data from the middle of year cuz you saw there were far you let, far less kids not taking it to when we do the end of year. To really see the true progress. And then the same chart for math is the next page. So in the next section, I wanted to look at how much growth did our students make by the fall, so just giving it a different look. So back to that Renaissance study, what they did with those students' results is they actually created these three cuts. They said these kids are making low growth, these kids are making typical, these kids are making high, so they created cuts through each. Using those cuts, I was able to compare the national students' performance to our campuses. So this is another way of looking at our beginning of year and the national. Okay, and if you'll go to the next slide, the grade two one is a really good example. So the top bar is the national performance, so you can see nationally thirty-six percent of students had low growth. Twenty-nine percent had typical growth for their grade level and thirty-five percent were above for grade two. I'd like you to look for a second at Cedar Ridge, so Cedar Ridge had thirty percent of their kids be- um below, thirty percent typical and forty percent above. So this is measuring growth in a different way, not necessarily on grade level, but the students making growth and progress. If we look for example at Mountain View, we see that fifty-eight percent having low growth, twenty-one percent having typical. And twenty-one percent high is off the national average. So in each case, I try, I put the national one on there for you so you could see how the campuses are related to it. And so the next few slides are just the grade three reading, grade four reading and grade five reading. Okay, so I did not do math because you saw those scale scores, you saw how far behind it was. So that wasn't gonna be useful data for us to see how the growth is going when they're so far behind in content. So I have in big letters in my notes, so how are the kids doing right now is probably what you're thinking. So we want a snapshot of right now using the mid-year results, so the kids just took the Renaissance test. And looking at the mid-year, this is with the zone that teachers will be in, this is the the instructional data for the classroom. You see that we have nine percent of our kids in the seventy-fifth percentile or above. So these students are considered to be at or above grade level, so they're operating pretty well. The next set of students up, we have thirteen percent of our kids who are in the fiftieth to seventy-fourth, that means they're on watch. That they're at grade level but just barely, so we need to watch them. The next one up is the twenty-fifth to forty-ninth, these students are intervention. These students are falling far behind their peers, that's twenty-four percent. And then you can see below twenty-five percent is labeled in Renaissance as urgent intervention or sometimes known as tier three. These students need something far more intensive. Fifty-four percent of them explains to you what elementary teachers are going through right now. So it's very hard, the students are there, but we saw on the other slide, the kids are growing just not as quickly as they might in other years. So the students in that percentile are deemed below grade level, so if we put numbers together, seventy-eight percent of our students right now are below grade level. Okay, and then the next slide shows the elementary math. Which is a little bit better. So eighteen percent are at or above grade level, twenty-three percent are on watch, meaning they're on grade level but just barely. Twenty-three percent need some kind of intervention and thirty-five percent need urgent intervention. Catching up on the math, teaching the concepts can get a lot of kids, you know, going faster, but the reading levels is harder to bounce back from. And then the next slide shows secondary reading. So that first column where it says number of students below the tenth percentile, that's urgent intervention. And then in the middle, the twenty-fifth to tenth, that's still urgent intervention. So those show you and you can see the grade equivalents, so tenth and sixth graders are at an average level in reading of. Three point six, third grade, sixth month and lower. But again, the further along the student is in their education, the farther back to fall. Okay, so next, since I couldn't give you the math data, the the growth in the same way I could give you the reading. This gives you a more accurate idea of student concept mastery. So with math, it if I can't do multiplication, but I can do fractions, am I still good in math? So when we look at data in math, we usually break it into the type of math that it is. So what we used instead of the Renaissance data, we used our TCAs, our taught curriculum assessments, which are built by the curriculum department. So the next few slides show you the units that we've already given, so in first grade, they've taught six units. And you can see that they have a percent of approaches or better, meets or better and masters, so relating it to those STAR terms. This data is far more encouraging because look at, for these children on uh in this first grade, look at unit five. Eighty-one percent of them are, approaches are better, so when we isolate the concepts and see how they're doing, we get better results. If you'll look at the next one for grade two. You can see where teachers would take action, if you look at unit four. Approaches are better, forty-nine point seven five percent. These kids have had a good sixty to eighty percent performance and all of a sudden they dropped to forty-nine. That's the data that teachers would use to choose concepts to reteach. So this is more of that classroom data in math and it's far more encouraging cuz it's small bites, it's small bites of data along the way.
Six oh two tested in the first unit and then look at unit four, seven ninety. And again, just pointing at the instability teachers are seeing with with just the, you know, stability in classrooms.
Think into these results are based on a a unit that was just taught.
Mm-hmm.
Versus um a Renaissance test that's measuring everything you should know in a grade.
Right, a more long-term picture of what you've learned and mastered, yes. So that is what these slides are, they take in the second grade math, third grade math. Fourth grade is the grade that stood out to me, you can see across the board on their approaches. They're consistently struggling, that makes sense to me because the jump from third to fourth grade in rigor is the biggest jump in K twelve, believe it or not. So it makes sense to me that our fourth graders are struggling there. And the next slide is fifth grade math. Sixth grade math. Seventh. And eighth. And then Algebra one and Algebra one represents all the students at the high school and in the eighth.
And Algebra I represents all the students at the high school and in the eighth grade working together. So before Dina comes up, I wrote a note for myself that says, the bottom line, we've had a significant COVID slide, which was compounding an issue for our students who were already behind, and some of them very far behind. But we're making progress. We are moving forward. We all like that momentum to be faster, but the data is showing me that at least the kids are maintaining the levels that they can perform at, or they're moving forward when we look deeper at the TCAs. So now Dina's turned it off.
So the TCAs that you're looking at here are the, those are the assessments that we worked on this summer during curriculum writing. And so we have the same data at this level for reading as well, and science also. But you had so much data at the beginning of this presentation from Renaissance. We wanted to show you this for math, because a little less data there. But if at any time you would like to see the data represented from those taught curriculum assessments, in that way, we can certainly present that as well. Okay, could you go to the next slide, please? So what are we doing, and how will we respond to this? The first thing I want to say is that the work that we were already doing to try to reinforce learning and improve, you know, what was happening in the classroom, is it's still the same work that we have to do. It's not new work. It just becomes that much more imperative that we are implementing and doing that work with fidelity. And so, you know, it's been a little difficult this year, because of all the things we've talked about up until now, about the stress on teachers and the closures and different things. And so teachers are trying, and they're working really hard. But certainly, when we're able to get back to a more stable environment, they will be able to implement interventions and do those things, you know, better and more consistently with students. So some of the things that we will continue working on and also put into place to work on, and closing those gaps. As you know, last summer, we weren't able to have summer school. We could have had a version of it, but I think at that time, no one knew how to have school back then. And so we have figured it out. So we are planning for the elementary level, a three-tiered system for summer school, because our students, as you can see, they have varying needs. So a traditional summer school won't fit. We have students who aren't far below grade level, that maybe just aren't passing because of engagement. They have failing grades, because they haven't turned in assignments, or they have absences. And so they need a boost, but they may not need as much as the next. So that's one type of intervention. Then we have students who are, as Denise said, in need of significant intervention, but maybe not so much as that student who is a tier-three type student. And that student needs something very different as well. So we're looking at really differentiating summer school to be able to meet those needs. At the high school level, and at the middle school level, it looks a little bit different. And we're still in the planning phase for that. I kind of skipped to high school, but it'll be more of a version that's a little bit more similar to an elementary version, because most of those students aren't in credit recovery, unless they're an algebra student typically. But we do have the ability to put our middle school students on some edmond courses to recover classes if need be, but some of them, that's not what they need. They need intervention. High school, the really big hurdle there, not only, you know, are we dealing with students who may be below level, but we're dealing with credit loss. And so that's going to deal, you know, that's going to affect their graduation ultimately, whether it's now or in a couple of years. So it's going to be working on credit recovery and attendance recovery, because really, at that level, we're having more significant problems at the high school level with that than at the elementaries. Last year, moving into this year, we really worked on our multi-systems of support, which you might more commonly understand or reference as RTI. So it's now called MTSS, that's the new name. And so Courtney Parnell, who is the director of 504 Deluxe and Intervention, she's really worked hard on a plan for that, which actually did go into effect this year. However, it's been difficult to provide those interventions in a way when we have a lot of students in different places. Can you go back? One more back, please. And so, back one more. And so we are going to be really focusing on that. And that is going to lead us into a situation of where we're really looking at the resources that our campuses have, to ensure that they have interventionists to do the interventions. That, you know, we can't implement interventions without that. So really looking at our title money and ensuring that each of our campuses have what they need. And then, which is covered in that bullet under that. And then scheduling and staffing structures to support interventions. At the high school level, intervening during the school year is kind of a different animal. And so looking at our classes scheduled for intervention, which could be offered as an elective to a student, to also looking and working with our special ed department to reconfigure and rework how resources provided to students. So really looking at the system as a whole for closing gaps. Those were things we were working on anyway, but they've become so much more important now than they were. Next slide, please. The work that we'll continue doing is revising our curriculum and our TCAs, and as we were. So the ones that we created last summer, we will ask for feedback on and revise those as we continue to make those stronger and aligned. Same with curriculum. And then we'll be adding curriculum in the areas that we didn't write this summer. And then ongoing training to support lesson development alignment and differentiation. So we have to have strong lessons, and we have to have differentiated lessons to ensure that we're meeting the students' needs. And so that is already a focus, and will continue to be. Continued professional development and data-driven instruction. So all of that data that Denise presented to you will link back to standards, and will link back to specific conceptual misunderstandings that students are having. And so our data helps us identify that. And then the ongoing lesson plan design and intervention helps us then carry out what needs to be done to address those deficits. And so those link hand in hand and are critical, really, moving into next year. Ongoing professional development and action coaching. So that's where our principals are working with our teachers, giving them feedback around the teaching that they're seeing, and, you know, helping them just develop and become stronger in the classroom, or stretch. If we have our teachers who are veterans, then we're just getting better. And if we have our new teachers who need, you know, to grow, then we're supporting them in that way as well. We, as you know, implemented our literacy initiative at the elementary level this year, although not like it was originally planned. And so that had to be altered a bit, but that will continue. And then that is extending up to the middle school next year. And so our middle schools will be starting and working on kind of a workshop model there. And our middle school classes will be double-blocked in ELA to provide time for the workshop model, but then also to provide time for intervention in class. Implementing an instructional framework for math. So working with our math teachers on lesson design and delivery. And then our reading academies, which are state-required, launched last year. And then we started with our kindergarten and third grade teachers. And so this summer, our first grade and second grade teachers will move into those. And then it's going to be important, when I talked about MTSS and intervention, intervention in such a systemic and systematic way is a little new. And so our intervention teachers need support and professional development to help them ensure that they're prepared to offer those lessons to, you know, for our students to close the gap. So working with them and helping to, you know, develop their craft. But then also, at each level of intervention, we have, sorry, we've prescribed resources to use. The campus can always purchase additional resources, but as a district, we've provided resources for tier-two and tier-three at all levels. And so continued professional development needs to be planned in those areas. Implementation of bilingual program evaluation recommendations. So our bilingual program concluded its evaluation, and we got some recommendations there. So we're working through those now to determine how they impact our future and the impact of that program and where we're going next there. And then, of course, you've heard Mr. Allen talk a lot about technology. And so we're partnering with them with, around technology, but to really decide what our teachers need. So they, you know, they drank from a fire hose this year and took on the technology and everything that came with it. But with that being said, we know that it would have been best practice to go to a slower place at pace, but we didn't have that luxury this year. So they need continued support in that area, because now that we have it, we need to use it effectively. And so we'll need to continue to partner and work in that area. And then ongoing assessment development of district and campus systems to increase effectiveness of instruction. So all the things that you've heard this evening from opportunity culture, you know, all of the things that we're working on fit together in this system that we're really working on and trying to focus on strengthening our instruction and learning. So that is, that's all. Any questions?
I have just a question. Thank you so much for this information. I was looking at it, and my eye was starting to twitch. I was like, oh my goodness, this is so much work that has to be done. You know, just, I mean, I'm glad that they're holding, but I think, oh, man, they don't need to be holding, they need to be increasing, you know, I think.
And imagine, if our shoulders are tight, imagine our teachers, our principals.
I was just looking at this. I mean, literally, I started a misuse, and I was like, my eye's twitching, because I'm, man, this is a lot of work. And so I guess, I guess the questions that I have, I know you're talking about summer school, is that kind of, are you thinking kind of in-person intervention?
It's a, right now, we're looking at a hybrid kind of model. So those students that, and we're in the middle of planning it. So I don't have every detail. They're actually meeting next week, secondary and elementary, to work through more details. But right now, we're looking at a hybrid model. So the tier of students where I said are pretty much on grade level, but they may have failing grades and such. They might be more in a virtual situation, but there's a little bit more teeth to it at that point, because it's needed for, you know, progress and to advance to the next grade. So there would be a contract kind of to that. The other levels, we're looking at possibly a kind of a split week of some in-person and some remote, so that there's a little bit of flexibility there, but depending on the needs of the students. But to allow teachers to be able to work with smaller groups of students. So I'll have a little bit more information for you to share next month. At some of the other presentations, I can touch on that if you would like, because we'll have more of the details worked through by that time.
What, if I could ask another question, what? You know, I know it can be done. I know kids can make a year, two-year gains, you know, in a one-school year. But it is a lot of heavy lifting. It's a lot of hard work. And, you know, I, gosh, I mean, really, it just, in my mind, it looks like a teacher there, and we're literally just keep handing them tools to use to be able to kind of address the kids' needs, you know. Is that the curriculum, I guess, that you guys are putting in their hands and the training, you feel fairly confident that, hey, this is?
So you have the main curriculum, but then you have, you know, what's going to be used for intervention. And one of the things, when you get to intervention, yes, teachers have to have resources to use. But beyond that, one of the mistakes I think we make in intervention is a lot of times, we're not intervening at the right point. So the resources don't matter if you're not intervening at the right point. And so the DDI process, as well as, you know, any other conversations that we have in PLCs or whatever around that, really getting down to specifically, what is it? You know, if it's this standard, okay, but what within the standard? Because that's what we need to be doing to intervene. We may need to reteach the whole standard to a student, or we might not. I always give the example of a student who I had. I was working with a teacher who was struggling with division. It wasn't division, they couldn't subtract, and I may have told you all that story before. But that teacher could have intervened at that level all day, but if they didn't go hit that, it wasn't going to matter. So it's really, really, it's teaching teachers how to identify that misunderstanding, and then planning those strong-aligned lessons to meet that need. And then we provide the resources, and we do have those to, for them to use. You know, something that's different than what they're using in the rest of the classroom. But then I really do think with those interventionists, we have to have teachers who are masters of their content as interventionists. We can't have people who aren't reading teachers intervening with our most difficult students. And in some instances, that is what we have now, because we don't have the resources to provide that person in that classroom. And so that's what we're looking at to ensure that campuses have that. Now, you know, you still get down to, can I find that teacher? I mean, can I hire that teacher or whatnot, if I have it? But you have to try, so.
Well, if we've got financially aligned our resources to get what we need. And so that's what Dina's talking about with the Title I allocations. There, we have some opportunity to restructure, to get down to the kid level and really know those kids and boost them up. It's just, you know, it's been a really hard year. We've had so many disruptions. We were behind before COVID, and this has just been devastating to us. And we've got to have our, we've got to know our kids. We've got to stay on course with the instructional strategies that we are trying to implement, the initiative that we already launched. We, Dina got here October of?
Fourteenth.
October what?
October fourteenth. I think it was two thousand nineteen, I don't even know now.
She started implementing DDI and action coaching. We wrote curriculum in the summer, in the middle of COVID, and we just have been thrown every kind of curveball you can imagine.
And then we're closed for snow, which has never happened ever.
But we've got to, we've got to stay, we've just got to stay on course. And they've done that this year to the best of their ability, but we haven't been able to capture every kid. And then I might add that there really is no silver bullet. It's not going to happen overnight. It take, you've got staff development, you've got structures and systems that need to be improved. And it just takes time. And so, you know, you asked about confidence level in the work. I have a lot of confidence in the strategy that's been outlined here to move forward, but we need time to get there. And our kids, we need to know our kids really well, each and every one of them. And we got to stay, we just got to stay focused.
I mean, to Dr. Kinkanen's point, we were doing all of these things, because we already knew we needed to improve. And so, right. And so now these things, you know, I mean, now our kids have taken this hit. And so it is going to take a little bit longer to recover. I mean, it is. And so something that you were looking at implementing and thinking, you know, you would see growth, but thinking for good, solid change is usually around a three-year kind of process. You know, I don't know, you know, listening to Denise's projections, how long will it take? I don't know. But we were already kind of in, you know, working on that progress. And so another thing to note, that when Denise was covering that data, one of the things that the Renaissance report did reveal that when they were talking about catching kids up, it was catching them up to where they were when it started. So if you have kids who are already behind, it's catching them up to the point of their, you know, their level of learning at that time. And then you have to get them to grade level. So it's, we were already dealing, in some instances, you know, certainly not all, but in some instances, we were already, as all districts do, you know, have students who struggle. And that's why the state mandates MTSS. And, and that's why the state mandates MTSS. But, yeah, it, it will be, it'll be significant and we will see the effects of it for, for a while.
I have a, a question just about, when we met, I want to say it was in November, December, to talk about returning kids to in-person because of grades and because of absences. Have we recaptured some of that student population? And I know we wouldn't have data on them because they weren't necessarily, you know, taking the testing that they needed to be taking. But do we feel like we have some of those children back in the classroom identified, getting intervention?
We do. I think, I pulled the data and I wish, I think it was nine hundred, around nine hundred students that I'm trying to remember. I shared it. Was it? Okay. What I.
We're pushing with about twenty-eight percent remote right now as of today, which is still a lot, yes.
Yeah. What I don't know, though, is at the time, because that was January nineteenth is when they were being asked to come back. That was the beginning of the new semester. And so that was around the number we asked to come back. But then, did they come back? Because requesting for them to come back and did they actually show up? We were kind of waiting to see on that because they, you know, some of those students who were requested to come back, it was because of absences and engagement. So, you know, if, if they were requesting to return, or being asked to return, if they already weren't engaged, that was the fear, that maybe they didn't return. And so I don't have that number right now. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll come back at the March workshop and talk about grades nine through twelve, so we can give you some information about high school kids.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, Denise is.
Yeah, we switched.
I never thought I'd say this, but on a lighter note, an accountability update. Okay, so the big update on accountability for the state is that the schools and districts will not get ratings this year. So we will have a second year where we do not have to worry about the, the letter grades or anything. We will still test children, and so I'll explain that in a second. But we will not have letter grades published or even calculated for that matter. TA will release the data to us and publicly, but they will not use it for calculations. So in each of the slides here, it talks about what was on the left and the changes for 2021. So I'm just going to kind of summarize the changes for each. So the first one, the first change for 2021 is the military enlistment is no longer used as one of the indicators. We will get back to using it as an indicator when TA has made a contract with the Department of Defense. Because reported in PMS was some outrageous number, like forty percent of the teenagers are joining the military in PMS, and it's not that number. So because of that widespread inaccuracy, TA will not use military enlistment until the Department of Defense confirms for us. The CTE coherent sequence is gone. It was a half a point, so it is phased out again this year. So even though we don't have accountability, the kids have to actually do the certifications now, no longer just take the class. Accelerated testers won't be included this year, but in the future. Accelerated testers are the students who took their Algebra I EOC as eighth graders. Federal law requires a reading and a math score at high school. So those children, before the end of their twelfth grade year, will ha, will have to take the ACT or the SAT, and they will have cut scores for approaches, meets, and masters. So all TA is hoping for this year is a waiver to just count them for participating and not yet calculate them like their star scores. There will be no domain scaled scores or A through F ratings. There will be, and all districts will read as not rated, declared state of disaster. Next one for domain two, we, in the spring of 2020, we were granted a waiver, so we did not test. Therefore, there's no way to calculate growth. We don't have growth from last year. This problem's going to persist until next year because we're not going to have high, the ninety-something participation we need in every grade level in order to do growth. So TA is working on that solution. And for school progress, TA will only use the raw scores to put you on, put us on the graph. Next, for domain three, this is our federal accountability. The academic growth will not be on there, the student groups. The academic achievement won't be there because they're not going, they're going to report what the kids do, but they're not going to calculate it. They'll just tell us how many targets we would have met. The most important two pieces on this slide is the English language proficiency. Our students are currently in the window for Tellpass, and Tellpass is the connective thread. So this year, we'll create a baseline for students to be compared next year. So what they're going to do is look back at Tellpass from two years ago, 2019, to compare to this year's students, to just give us the data again. And the high school, we'll talk for, in a minute, about the graduation rate that they will be adjusting in domain three, the graduation rate. So next slide, no academic growth, participation rate. So we are required to have ninety-five percent of the students in every subpop take the test. That's not going to be where we land this year. So they will report the participation rate, but they're, they submitted a waiver so that there are no consequences from the U.S. Department of Ed. CCMR, again, the annual grads in grade twelve and no military. And then the English language proficiency, they'll, it was optional last year. It is not optional this year, so the students are taking it. And so they will look back and where they find a score, we'll see some growth. Next, the federal graduation rate. So at this point, it's just, did you hit the ninety and go up point one? And so they added two other possibilities. So if you don't get a yes there, you could get a yes with, do you have, are you above the four-year ninety-four and have this? The improvement from the class of 2015, which is our baseline. And then third, if one and two are not true, did the student group meet its four-year rate growth target? And so we do kind of care about this because graduation rate, as I reported to you before, has had some issues. But Brazos High School is starting to make moves. So we will probably need to use the growth target, but they actually now have a way to show they're improving their graduation rate instead of just getting the no every time with not much place to go with that. Next, comprehensive targeted and additional targeted. These are the school improvement labels for federal accountability. So TA submitted an addendum to ask them to retain the existing labels on schools. So the schools we have that are labeled will just stay labeled until August 2022. They want to postpone the escalation of the additional targeted labels. That's a new feature that would have kicked in last year. So they need to have three years' worth of data, so they, they literally cannot kick it in until a few years from now. The schools that receive funding must opt in for the interventions that are asked of them. We've been doing those, the ESF visits, the data coaching, all those things. Campuses will be evaluated for comprehensive based on their six-year. This is another boon for Brazos. So the feds only use the four-year rate, but when they decide, are they going to label a high school comprehensive? They use only the four-year. Well, that's not fair to schools like Brazos, which are alternative education. They literally have a different label with TA. So in this case, those campuses can use their six-year rate. And that, that's more in the spirit of what Brazos is. Because if they could have graduated in four years, they probably would have just stayed at Waco High University. So this is a, a target at Brazos for us to shoot for, a more reasonable goal for us. And then the current comprehensive campuses identified solely by graduation rate may exit. We only have one, which is Brazos, but they cannot exit because they're identified for more than one reason. But we can work on their graduation rate and then we can begin working on their star score performance. Next, no distinctions this year because they're not going to compare districts. Distinctions come with district comparisons. And if one district has fifty percent of its kids not take it because they're virtual and another one has seventy percent, you simply cannot do the comparison. Next, testing updates. A student, the online testing window was extended for five weeks. Okay, so the online, so taking it online, what TA did for us was extended, and it is a five-week window. That's very different from the traditional one-day paper. So paper testing windows are not extended because you have to have time to process them and grade them. But they left the windows open and that is almost like a little nudge to us to move to online testing, which is coming down, down eventually, that we will be taking the tests online. Okay, star grades, star writing, grade four and seven, and English one and two have been assigned designated days to, within each week of the five-week window for an extension. So that's because of the writing. And eventually, the fourth and seventh grade writing will no longer exist. I believe this is their last year. And then we will transition to the reading test being a reading/writing test. Okay, next one, star alt-two, which is for our significant need students. Will now have a two-week preview window, and this test is administered one-on-one with students of severe disabilities. So teachers get a preview window so they can figure out how to set up the test tasks themselves. So they extended that. The Tellpass window has been extended by a week to give us seven weeks for us to get all the students taken care of. This does not include K and one because they are rated differently. Tellpass alt, which is for students who do, who are bilingual and have significant disabilities, so that does exist. That one has been extended as well. And the Tellpass holistic ratings and Tellpass alt, multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate their proficiency, and they can be done remotely. So there's actually ways for them to do those things. Next, a student must be present at a monitored test session and must be supervised by a trained test administrator. So the kids have to test in person. They cannot take the STAR exams remotely. And so this creates some confusion with parents. It's not really an opt-out, but the option is there. To accommodate testing during this health practices, districts may set up alternate testing sites. So we can have other locations closer to the students' homes, where we can administer the test there within this five-week window. For students who do not test during the district scheduled assessment, they may offer additional testing days, again, within the testing window. If a student receiving remote instruction does not test, they will mark their documents as O for other. So O for other takes them out of our data for counting against us, even though we're not getting ratings. But it kind of honors that we have no control over that. So the O for other means the school didn't have any control about why this test was graded this way. And if a student is unable to test during a quarantine, so they are an in-person child, they are quarantined, we would label them absent. And that's just going to be ways to sort the data of students who do not test. And then next. So normally, oh, so graduation 2021. Normally, a student who has not passed up to two or more of their tests may graduate through an individual graduation committee process. For the nineteen-twenty school year, they waived that piece. So here's the confusion. There is in the media that the commissioner has said, well, if the kid is remote, they can not test. That is not true for the high school students. So it's not Texas Education Code that they have to pass those tests. It's law. So last year, we were able to have some waves because the governor was the one that used his authority to say, we're not administering the tests. And the commissioner was able to open up IGC to all five tests. So if a kid had failed all five, we can do the graduation committee. But this year, those waivers do not exist. So we do not want high schoolers to think that they cannot test and still graduate. They must take the test because it's in law. So it's not in the commissioner's authority to change it. We're in a legislative session, so something may happen, but at this point, I've not seen anything that way. But we want to really make sure our high schoolers understand, you don't test this year, you're going to be testing next year. You'll be a retester because you have to have that score. And you can't hold the graduation committee if the student hasn't tested at least once. So we can't even do that for the remote kids. We need a score. So that's what all of these bullets talk about. If they're not graduating and currently enrolled in EOC, they can't have that waiver for special education or otherwise. And so I'll go into some more details with you when I do the data, more charts and graphs, so exciting. When I do the, when I do the high school data, I'm going to give you a sense of how many IGCs do we need for the traditional rules of two tests? And then how many would we need if it was three or more? How many of our kids would need this opportunity so that we can have more of a reality check on the impact that would have on our students? Okay?
That we would encourage all of our students to, all of our remote students to come in and take a STAR assessment this year. We need the data. So we will make plans to test every single one of them. We can get them here.
Okay.
It's a lot.
It is a lot. There's a lot going on. Are you ready to move?
Okay, the next item on the agenda is just to review and discuss long-range facilities planning. Our next meeting is Monday, and that is a remote meeting as we have had. So, and then we'll have another opportunity to talk at our workshop on the eighteenth of March. So if you all have any feedback from the last meeting, we could visit about that this evening. Or we can visit again on March eighteenth, whatever you prefer. You have any takeaways from our last meeting? Thank you. Well, we're, we're going to go a little bit deeper. At the next meeting, we'll spend some time talking about costs of schools. And our focus will be on high school and Waco High School in particular, and some strategy and options for addressing Waco High School.
Sounds good.
That's what I thought you might think.
Okay, I'll pass it back to you.
Okay. Let's see, that, I think this is the last item on our agenda. So at our workshop, two weeks ago, we conducted the superintendent's evaluation in closed session. No action was taken that night. Tonight, we have on our agenda to take action regarding the extension of the superintendent's contract, the evaluation instrument for next year, and the 2021 performance goals. The 2021 performance goals are in the pocket, and that'll be the basis of the evaluation instrument for next year if we approve them. And an extension of the superintendent's contract is normally a year to keep a three-year contract, which is what she has now. And I'll just open it up and say that, I was just sitting here reflecting on the quality of the work that we're seeing right now in spite of unprecedented, unbelievable times. Your, you know, the curriculum and instruction work is, is extraordinary and is quite a balance. I know with what we're all living in our personal lives, our parents and our families and our kids, but also doing what's right by kids to keep them up to speed as much as possible. It's just really hard work. And, you know, you go from there to just the work that we've seen getting our staff vaccinated and how it took a lot of creativity and proactive work on your part to get it done. Wouldn't have gotten done if you hadn't have called Dr. Haskett. Just wouldn't have. You know, maybe in a couple of months, but it, but by your proactive work and energy, we have a significant percentage of our staff that's received a vaccine when other teachers across the state don't. So that's exceptional, and I could go on and on and on. So, anyway.
Very good. Madam President, may I? This is a good opportunity to, I guess, not only review the last year, and we know some of the elements that we've encountered and the superintendent and her staff's encountered. But let me kind of extend your comments into what Dr. Haskett said earlier this evening about the responsiveness that you and your staff have had to make that vaccination process happen. I'm going to, I'm going to kind of go back and, and give some summary from my viewpoint. Going back as far as just simply saying, you know, great people do great things, okay? Great leaders build great teams. And I think you've shown to be an outstanding leader with the teams that you have built, starting back when you came on board, identifying gaps, building those teams, developing plans to address the interventions and narrow those gaps in a very systematic and, and problem-solving way. Well, what we know is that the best plans, and you're known to be a planner, the best plans in that timeframe got derailed, beginning March of last year. And then they were derailed again, and then they were misdirected. And then new instructions, we were detoured. And all that to say, your team has continued to work through these issues in a very professional, in a very meaningful way to move this district forward. Bottom line, doing more with less, less time, less money, more stress. doing more with less, less time, less money, more stress. So just to echo what Angela said, uh, your teams have shown to be incredible. Uh, and I'm looking at this room, uh, you know, just corner to corner. I I won't get everybody, but maintenance of facilities, purchasing, H R, accountability, curriculum instruction, communications, I T, uh, central office, finance, police, athletics. I mean, everybody has had a role, and we've heard report after report that is moving the ball forward in spite of the interva- intervention. So I'm gonna applaud the challenges and what you've attained in this timeframe since you, we got derailed and then derailed again last week. Immensely. And then you were right to applaud your maintenance and and uh facilities group. But I guess, give you uh a a a very strong thank you for uh the challenges that you've addressed and the accountabilities or or the achievements that you have attained. Not in terms of accountabilities, because we don't have those yet. Those are developing. Those are coming. But in terms of your rapid response. Awesome. So congratulations. We appreciate you. We appreciate your teams and uh good things are happening. We appreciate it.
You know, I I I think, sorry, thank you, Madam President. I think in imagery, I don't really know football, but that's kind of what comes to mind, so bear with me in this. I'm more of a soccer person, but that might not hit with most people. So, but I think uh when I think of what you have done and how you pivot, you have been a quarterback for a team that has had to pivot, switch plays, scrap everything, do something new, that has had to rally her team to something higher. And you know, you, you are the Tom Brady. That we are, I, that's the only person I know. But you have, you really have, you've shown that your expertise and your wisdom really is coming in and and helping, not only with the systems, but I would say getting the the ball to the right people when they need it. And uh in, you know, your support of your staff, I I watch you time and time again in how you back them up and you support them uh so that they can do the work that they need to do. And I think that is the equality of a very good leader because you know that you're not a Lone Ranger in this. But you really are working side by side um with people. And I think people on your administration and your staff, I think they know that, they see that, they feel it. I've talked with teachers and they, they adore you. You know, they really do feel your support. And I think that goes a long way in what we're trying to do, which is impact students. Because really, the more support you can give to teachers and administrators, the more, the positive outcome actually benefits the students. And so I just wanted to thank you for um, I guess, you and your team for all the hard work you guys have done. Because it has not been easy by any stretch of the imagination. I mean, there have been curveballs thrown at you, and I just, I really do, I see excellence in your not only in your leadership, in the team that you've, you have around you. I, I am thoroughly impressed and very excited to see where your team can go, so, and take us. So I appreciate it.
They've worked really hard.
Thank you.
I want to echo everything that my fellow board members have said. And just to add, um, this has been a really just, I mean, I I don't think anybody can overemphasize how hard of a year this has been. And it's a year where even a really great leader could just kind of just try to keep the boat afloat and bail it. But you've done more than that. You, you have pushed things forward this year during incredibly hard circumstances and just trying to keep the goal of getting us where we need to be in the future. And it's so, I I I mean, I just have a lot of admiration for your ability to do both things at the same time. And also, you've become a leader, not just of our district, but I think citywide, countywide, bringing people together, bringing resources together, and um, you know, I really can't add more than that, but you and your whole team. I'm just always impressed by everybody's professionalism and accessibility and just willingness to get in there and do all the hard work.
I mean, I'd say the same thing as a parent and as school board member. I just, um, you and your team, the way y'all step up for the district, the community, and everything I do is just outstanding.
Yeah, okay, I guess. I'm gonna speak and then we're all gonna go home, right? Okay, all right. I'll be brief. Thank you, Susan. I would, it, by all visible indicators, fantastic job. Thank you. And it's obviously these trying times, uh. We'll know more about results, I suppose, in a couple of years. You know, ultimately, I know that you know that's what we're after long-term. And that's, that's uh, uh, that's what we've got to do. But um I have every confidence that you'll be successful at that. But uh, thanks for all of you and and your team's efforts. They do a good job. Again, the professionalism is impressive and is a step above what we've seen in the past. And thank, thank you for that. And thank all of y'all for that.
You didn't say you were the last one. I I didn't mean to omit anybody, but I do want to mention, make a mention that without the teachers, the campus staff, the central office administrators, uh, we can't say enough, and we don't say it often enough, about how thankful we are for what they do day in and day out for our students. I mean, it's a team effort. You're the, you know, you're the, you're the Tom Brady that's built the team. And and uh, we uh, we appreciate anybody, and I hate to, I I don't mean to exclude anybody, but we do need to say especially to the teachers that are in the classrooms, that are working remotely, extended hours in a stressful environment uh where they have difficult situations at home based on last week as well. So uh, just, just want to reach out to them and say thanks and thanks again, and we just don't say it often enough, so.
Thank you. I'm happy to be here and I love this work. We're, we're gonna do the best job we can for our kids.
With that said, I move that we adopt a, add a one-year extension to the superintendent's contract. Opt the goals for twenty twenty-one, uh, the goals as presented and the evaluation tool. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Torwood. Is there any further discussion?
Just one more on top, Paula. I just appreciate Ms. Houston recognizing your leadership in our city and our county. Because at each stage of this crisis, um I see our, our community leaders looking to you to lead them, to guide them, to organize, and um, and I'm proud that you have that you have set Waco I S D up as, as the leader um in our community. And I'm always proud to see you out in front and having um rest follow. So, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? All right, I'll entertain. Uh, see, I've got a motion. All who's in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Detective Cannon and your team. And is that it?